A quick look at the agenda. We're going to talk about county surplus property. Jasmine's going to give us an update on the medication assisted treatment for opioid use disorders and potential board resolution. We're going to talk about bank financing for replacement of sheriff's vehicles. An update on the census. And Tim Love will also give us an update on the survey results from the regional broadband study. So that's what we have on the agenda. Are there any other items people would like to cover at this meeting? I have, I have one. I wanted to suggest, could we, could we maybe just have like a, if we have time, maybe just do a little discussion at the, after we get to the other agenda items, just about kind of this meeting and how this meeting's working for everybody. Is the timing the right? We've talked a little bit about the timing, you know, is a different time better? So why don't we just have a little check in on that and kind of see what folks are, what folks are, thoughts are on that? Okay. All right. Well, with that, I will, um, we'll go to the surplus property item.
Was there anything on tonight's agenda that you wanted to talk about?
Oh yeah, I'm sorry. The agenda for tonight too. Yeah. Any questions about anything on the agenda tonight? Okay. So we will have a, Ron wants, Ron Hayden wants to do a brief closed session with us. He, his schedule is that he has a family committee later, so he wants to do that at the beginning of our meeting. So I think we'll, we'll open the meeting and then we'll go ahead and go into closed session just to hear from Ron. He thinks it will not take very long. And then we'll come back into regular meeting, go through the agenda. And then there are a couple of other closed session items that we'll go back into at the end of the meeting. What, what are the nature of those items?
Two attorney-client matters and one is the ongoing litigation of, I don't have the site, but it's the estate of Michelle Smiley.
All right.
And don't forget the resolution for Gene.
Right.
Yeah.
Yes. All right. Any other questions about the agenda tonight?
Problemation.
Okay. Great. Okay. So now we're ready to talk about surplus property.
I don't know what I want to do.
Sorry, what?
You can go ahead, but I know what we need to do with that.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Board. On tonight, tonight's consent agenda is a new list of surplus items that we'll be seeking your approval for auction on gov deals. We plan on this to be a regular routine process to present this list to the commissioners on a quarterly basis or as needed if our surplus gets high. Another part of that process is to make this an active list that we'll put on our intranet so that other departments can go and look at this list to see what we have available for them. And what they don't pick and choose from is what we'll be providing to the commissioners to approve to auction on gov deals. Are there any questions or comments?
Yeah, I do. This has worked really well through Michael upstairs for many years. And you don't need to hold vehicles for 30 days. Value of vehicles go down. Plus the people down there having to try to keep the things running during the process. If battery's dead and stuff like that. I don't know anything about computers, but you know, you got computers, you got all kinds of stuff. As far as the board, I know a little bit about cars. Some people may know a little bit about computers. But so far, everything that we've done, even the gentleman I'm talking about, he took a $2.2 million check to the bank for us. That was one of them's money. I think, I've talked to Avril about this a little bit. It just needs to be fixed where the stuff's put up. It's put up for sale. It's put on the website. It don't matter if the people in departments know it. That's not the problem. It's, the problem is, we want to sell it and get rid of it. And sitting there holding it for 60 days or 30 days or 90 days is the wrong way to do it. So it just needs, we need to make some kind of amendment to where Mike, I can't think of his last name, is on the fourth floor.
Stanberry?
Huh?
Stanberry?
Right. He's been doing this for year after year after year. And with, with basically no problems, you know, if you want to go on, if I want to go on, anybody in here who wants to go online, you just go to GovCo. There it is. You might find something you want. But Avril, how can we fix it where it just goes through you or whatever it is? This does not need to come before us, period.
The statute requires that you would give me the authority then? So you would have to give that authority to staff where we can dispose of assets?
I make a motion in this little meeting, which probably is not going to count.
We can't, we can't vote on it here. We can talk about, we can talk about it when we're doing stuff, but we can't actually do it at this meeting today.
But the main thing is, we need to get it back to where it was. So this stuff, people look on, on this GovCo and they're used to looking at patrol cars and computers and all this stuff each and every month. They're not going to be used to looking at them every three months. Then you pile them on there, then the price goes down. So we need to get as much out of them as we can. And if, if we can do this, however, how, through, or Heather, let's see if we can, can't fix it to where she has authority.
With direction from the board, we could look at the policy as the county manager indicated and give flexibility to staff for items, or group of items valued at less than $30,000.
That's correct, because statute, 30,000 and higher, has to have, has to have a work group.
Is that for individual item or collection of items? So if there were four or five vehicles and they...
That's individual items.
Okay. So then you can still do those together, even though collectively they're more than that? Okay.
Run that individually, I would think, but that'd be a policy decision.
So we could look at that. That's something we could put on the agenda.
Yes.
So if you had, you know, three people here that wanted to do that, I, I think it's a good idea to look at it. It'd be good to put on the agenda to where we can discuss it. I don't have time to do that anymore.
Somebody, does anybody disagree with the idea that items less than 30,000 ought to be staff level process to, to sell them? I mean, it's, I mean, I guess I would just say, we ought to just make sure we're, you know, we feel also comfortable with the overall policies for vehicle replacements and things like that. And if we're comfortable with that, then yeah, these small ticket items, I think ought to be kind of administratively handled. So I'm, I'm open. Any other thoughts on this from other commissioners?
I think it's good idea. Good.
Okay. All right.
So are you not looking for that tonight? That'll be next meeting that we'll have that resolution. So we'll put this process in.
Get it in process so we can get this stuff up, get it down to the next meeting.
Sounds good. All right. So for less than 30,000, administrative over 30,000, it'll need to, at least be on the consent agenda, right? If not...
Anything above 30,000, we need to look at.
Okay.
But that other stuff, anything below that, it needs to be getting rid of.
All right. Thanks for the update, Ron. Appreciate it. Okay. Next up is the medication assisted treatment item. And Jasmine, you want to start us off?
Sure. Yeah, this is intended to be a preview and a discussion, certainly if, yeah, okay. A preview and a discussion if anyone would like to talk it through and want to acknowledge that Sheriff Quinton Miller is here. This, excuse me, item follows up on a presentation and discussion we had at our second meeting in May, broadly about different responses to the ongoing opioid crisis and the fact that despite so much good work being done, we continue to see very disturbing trends, both in the rates of unintentional overdose through opioid and then unfortunately overdose deaths. And just want to say thank you to all the staff at the county and at the sheriff's office and many community partners and state level partners from North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services who have for many months, I think, been looking at the question of what will be involved in expanding access to medication assisted treatment at the detention center. A little bit of brief context around this medication assisted treatment is considered the standard of care in treating opioid use disorder. And there's a lot of data showing the impact of those programs being available at the jail in terms of people being on the road to recovery from a very difficult disease. And also in terms of things like reduced rates of recidivism and the cost savings that go into that. So this is an issue that ties most directly into our strategic commitments around responding to the opioid crisis. It also has tie-ins to our work around criminal justice issues and trying to develop programs and interventions that break some of the cycles, especially of folks that are being arrested again and again and again, when really what's going on is a mental health need or a, a health need related to addiction and the disease of addiction. So this, today, really just wanting to preview that on our August 20th meeting, be introducing a resolution along with Chairman Newman and Commissioner Edwards as the two other folks putting this on the agenda. But I've had the chance to be in touch with everyone on the commission about it. And this resolution would endorse the use of medication assisted treatment as a standard of care and specifically endorse the planned expansion of the program at the detention center, which is scheduled to launch in its pilot phase in September with seed funding that's coming from North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services through a state opioid grant. So this will be leveraging external funding to create this expansion of services. And this is an opportunity, I think, for the commission to throw strong, strong support for that as it gets off the ground. And also to have another opportunity for conversation in our community about the ongoing realities of this terrible crisis and also, I think, a source of hope within it, which is that when people get access to MAT, as it's called, their chances of being able to rebuild their lives and lead healthy lives significantly increase. So just that little bit of a preview there. Happy to answer any questions. Sheriff Miller, if there's anything that you wanted to add, please feel free to.
So when is this coming on the agenda?
August 20th.
August 20th. Okay.
All right. So the only thing I'd add to that, I think it's a great, I don't know, if the sheriff is putting that in place, which I'm assuming that, that's where the direction is coming from, I think it's a great idea. I mean, certainly we want, you know, we want to try to give those people some help and some hope, you know, when they leave. I, I don't necessarily, you know, I'm not a big fan of doing, you know, a lot of resolutions, so not necessarily, I don't know that, that we have to do that. But I do think, you know, that, you know, strong support for that in trying to give them some help when they, while they're there, so that they don't seek out, you know, I had a conversation with a, with a friend of mine this morning where something had happened in Eagles parking lot that would have never happened 20 years ago in broad daylight, you know? And so a lot of that's drug related. And so anyhow, that's, that's my, my comments on it.
Other comments? So, you know, this is certainly not something I have deep expertise on, but I mean, the, the simple way I, I think about this, you know, kind of based on what I've learned, you know, had the chance to learn about it over the last few months is that for folks who have, you know, have an addiction issue, they're spending time in the detention facility for whatever reason, maybe it was related to that, maybe unrelated to that, you know, they're there, that when, when folks leave, there's this extremely high rate of overdose and a lethal overdose following people leaving, right? Because they have this addiction, they haven't been able to access these drugs that they have this addiction to for some period of time, short period or longer period, and then they, they, they can get access to it, they overdose, and there's a high rate of death following that. So that's, that's an outcome we're seeing a lot, but that there's evidence showing that if they can get some of this treatment, then it might actually be the opposite outcome. Maybe the time that they spend in the detention facility is actually a time where they can kind of start getting on a path where the chances of them successfully dealing with it are actually much better than if they... So kind of turning a, what's probably a negative situation from their perspective, being in the detention facility potentially into kind of a pathway that can be a better, a better path. So I'm sure I'm oversimplifying that some, but I think that's, you know, that's a very, a very compelling, you know, place to try to intervene, right?
Yeah. The best way to tell a story is often the simple way. And that's part of what this program does, is it doesn't just say, we're going to prescribe MAT while you're in the jail. It also is about connecting people to a continuum of resources so that when they are re-entering the community, they have ongoing access to that medication, but also access to safe housing, mental health support. So yeah, it's trying to break that cycle and kind of create a new story here in Buckham County. And the communities that have been able to do this see that it is creating that, that new story for folks and, and bringing hope into an issue that I think so often we just get such very grim, it's just very heartbreaking stories. I think all of us know those stories or we've seen, we've seen them, we've been directly touched by them. So that's part of what certainly motivates my interest in this is, is how can we help create more hope for folks and their families?
I think it'd be good if we're going to look at this, that we have some, we have some statistics or some, something, you know, where other departments have looked at it before, and here's some of the results. That way it's not just, you know, you know, an emotional move. It, it's, it shows that it actually does provide some assistance and some help. So, and I don't know who would deliver that at the meeting. If we're going to do it, I mean, we ought to have that.
We will supply that data for you.
But you have, over here on Merriman, over here on Merriman Avenue, it's not, it's people that take drugs or have been on drugs. They go every day, every single day to get this drug so that they don't stay on drugs and then to get their drug for two days. They have to show up on Merriman Avenue, every single day, stand in line to be able to get that drug for the one day.
I think you're referencing one site, and, and with the advent of medication assisted treatment, it's being widely prescribed across the county. There are even health departments in North Carolina that are starting to prescribe it. Minches prescribes it, Mahak prescribes it. So there's many different places, including someone's family physician, where they could get this prescription. And there's new technologies with the medication. It's, it's, some people would compare it to insulin, the way that, that's required to treat diabetes and, and the way there continue to be improvements in the way the drugs are available in terms of longer acting doses, et cetera, et cetera.
I think a fair, fair mission or direction or resolution is that we, we want to provide hope and help and assistance while people are, are in jail. But we want, we want the ultimate goal is for them to be free of that addiction. And I think we need to be, make, make sure that that's the message that we send, that we want them to be free of it.
I think that's the message.
If that helps them become, that helps them become free of that demon and addiction, then we should send that signal.
Yeah. Absolutely. That's exactly the message of it.
Yeah. I would like to say, I'm all for it. And just coming from a country boy, I believe in just common sense approach to everything. But when we look at opioid, the destruction it's doing, let's not talk about nationally or statewide, but here in Buckham County, I see it every day. I see it with members of my family, members of my church, everybody. We, I'm all for this resolution and we need to do all we can. And I agree with statistics, but folks, in some cases, we don't even begin to know the statistics and the damage that opioids are doing for us. And if we wait, it's going to just do more damage. But we need to take the lead as commissioners and do all we can to protect our community. And that's what it's all about, what we can do for our community. And folks, this is why we were put here. This is why we were elected. And for us to have a discussion on this, yeah, I don't, let's not waste time. Let's move on.
It's been around the corner one time already, a couple of years ago.
All right. Very good. Next up is the bank financing for sheriff's vehicles item, and Mason Scott's going to help us out with this one.
I have not been in front of you before. I'm Mason Scott with the Finance Department. I am presenting on behalf of Don Moore, who was out of the office this week. If you'll give me just a second, I'll see if I can access the presentation, which you should have in your packets.
We do have. We have. Yeah. So this is a topic that you've seen before.
This is really just a recap of the status of where we are at this point with the funding and financing of replacement vehicles for the sheriff's fleet. A high level overview of where we are in the timeline, along with the approval of the budget for this fiscal year. You all approved $1.65 billion to replace 48 vehicles in the sheriff's fleet. Following that, when we had entered this fiscal year, we worked with our, the county's financial advisor to facilitate and issue an RFP for financing the way of an installment purchase contract. Since that time, Finance Department and the financial advisor have been in discussions with one another, gathering, reviewing, and summarizing those proposals. We are here today on the 6th. I want to offer you a tentative recommendation for the lender we think that you all should resolve to go with. In two weeks, on the August 20th regular meeting, we expect you all, hope you all will select a bidder and approve financing of these vehicles. And then on September 6th is the tentative close date that we're working toward. As far as the bid process and the responses themselves, fairly straightforward. We requested a five-year term with fixed rates. Vehicle orders are already in process and will be so through November. We expect our first debt payment to go out August of next year. After five years, the final payment would be August of 2024. There were at least 50 lending agencies that were contacted for this process, including national, regional, and local organizations. We had 14 responses in total. Home Trust was the locally headquartered entity that responded to us. Our primary considerations in this release were obviously the interest rate, you'll see the range here, high ones to almost 3%. Closing fees and issuance costs, which kind of bump up the total financing amount and prepayment terms. There are some other considerations as well, the administrative burden on staff and things like that. So based on the responses we received, we did narrow it down to three lenders. This is a quick outline, and you all will see this again when you're asked to approve this financing in two weeks. This line at the top, if you can see it, is the actual budget approved for the vehicle financing. I will say that we did round up to an even number of 1.7 million, but we do not expect to finance in that amount just for the purposes of conversation. Based on that, the issuance cost and other fees essentially associated, we believe that Bank of Amer, Bank of America would be the lowest total cost for financing. And so that would be our recommendation today. You all will in the future see a resolution with more specific details about these proposals.
Hey, go back on, please. So interest rate 1.94, all-in TIC. What is TIC?
Total Interest and Cost.
Total Interest and Cost. So it's, it's accounting the, like, the issuance fees and the other items about it? That's all embedded? Okay. Thanks.
So from here, as mentioned, we will have a resolution and a contract available to you all in two weeks. The language be basically to authorize Avril and Don on behalf of the county to issue the debt. The language of the resolution and the contract would be a not-to-exceed amount. So in two weeks, we should have a better idea of the actual purchase cost of the vehicles. We would only be issuing in the amount that's appropriate to cover the vehicles being purchased. As mentioned, it would not exceed the budget in addition to the issuance cost for the debt. Again, we do recommend Bank of America as that lender. And then on September 6th, based on a decision from you all and final numbers in pricing, we would close the financing on September 6th. Are there any questions?
I'd just like to know why we have to have so many cars at one time? Who made that decision?
So I think that our understanding from the finance perspective is that this was a part of the budget discussion, so we're kind of just moving forward with the number that's already been agreed upon.
I'd still want to know. That's a lot of money, and it's never been done before. Greg Gerswell had 400,000 a year to work with. He made it work. These cars still work good. Now, we're talking all this money for 40-some vehicles that somebody threw out there, big number. I guess just because we're a big county, we can do what we need to, to spend with the people's money again. But me personally, I voted against this total budget. This is part of, one of the things that I voted against, because we have staff, we don't have management, we don't have finance. We have people that understand vehicles. He understands it being a sheriff. I understand certain things too. But the thing that I didn't understand is why we have people in different departments making decisions to spend 1.6 million dollars of the county's money financing it. Now, we, we had a screw-up here a year or two back. We got 1.8 million dollars worth of ambulances down here that were financed for 15 years. But that, that's not a good deal. Plus 10 new vehicles for the sheriff's department in that same process. And that's about two years ago. So how many vehicles do we have to have that's brand new? This 80,000 mile stuff, there's nobody, I'm riding around the car that turned 180,000 this morning. Still runs fine. Long as I don't hear anything, first wheel's falling off of it, I'm in good shape. Motor quits, you get it pulled in. Transmission quits, you get it pulled in. But, you know, these guys, when these things go for maintenance every 4,000 miles, it gets oil changed, gets the brakes checked, gets the rotors checked, gets everything checked for suspension on these cars for these guys that ride in them. Don't matter if it's got 100, don't matter if it's got 10,000. As long as that car is in good shape and the suspension does what it's supposed to do, there's no, nothing breaking. We're sitting here getting ready, and I let all six of my other members waste the money. But I will not vote one down for this. And I'd like to know, Sheriff, why you had to get $1,100 more for saddle wheels for your car from the department?
So is that, that your only question?
So here back here, are we going to have to get $1,100 for wheels for the next 46?
Okay. No, we will not. Now, first, I want to back up, because the first statement you stated that this has never been done, about the amount of vehicles we've ordered. That's not so. They've done it before.
Who did it?
Sheriff Duncan. They ordered, they had 50 vehicles. Are you aware of that?
Can we get back to, I've got questions on the financing.
Yeah. So, so I'd say, you know, Ms. Sheriff...
I have a question. I'd like to have an answer.
Can I go ahead?
Sure.
So the other part of that is, same way that I ordered Tahoe, you want to know, so I ordered a Tahoe and also ordered wheels on that vehicle. So the actual vehicle was, that initially was going to order cost more than the one I ended up with. So this is just one of 200-something vehicles that we have in our fleet that I drive. And in addition to that, that vehicle will be used again, not only by me, by others. So to answer your question on some way, and I will tell you on some way, in some kind of way, because Sheriff Duncan has done the same thing, and no one questioned him. So my question, when did you question him? Because I've, I've done my research.
I questioned him when he had his, I'm going to be there for my question. He got $1,350 a month to drive his own vehicle. I questioned him. That's what I do, Sheriff.
That's, that's, that's not, that's not the whole fact.
That's money in his pocket. Why did you, wheels on a vehicle count? Just because you wanted special saddle wheels don't mean nothing.
Yeah. So, so the, the agenda item is not the vehicle replacement policy, which we have talked about before. And if, and if there's three commissioners who want to put the vehicle replacement policy back on the agenda, we can totally do that. But the decision's been made to procure vehicles, so really the question on the agenda right now is how to pay for it. And if there's three commissioners who want to go back and look at the policy again, it's a fair question, but I would, I would want to see that people want to go back and spend time looking at the overall policy. That's not what we're talking about today. Other comments from commissioners?
Yeah. I've got a question. When I look at the interest rate, this 1.9, is that counting in there what we're paying upfront, the 23,000? The 23,500, is that normal now? Maybe I've been out too long.
There is a cost for issuing and preparing the documents and stuff. We do have our financial advisor here as well, if you want to give...
So the true interest rate is actually more, though?
The 2.46. That's the true interest rate, which is a 2.46, which is still lower if you go across on the...
Oh, that's still lower, but it takes into account the 23,500.
Correct.
Yeah. Boy, banks have a way of getting their money.
It's just, I mean, it's, it's pre-paid interest rate, which is all they have, it's pre-paid interest. All right. Other questions or comments from commissioners? All right. In this agenda, go ahead, Sheriff.
Just want to let Sheriff know, I, I stepped out and talked to Van Duncan when this come up and asked him, I said, you know, we're ordering a lot of vehicles. And he said, Mr. Presley, we have not ordered none over the past, and I have to totally support... totally support this because we have not been getting any vehicles last four years. And on Commissioner Farrar, 1.6 million, if you figure out you've been spending 400,000 a year on them, it's 1.6 over four years anyway. So I know whenever Van has nothing to gain or lose out of it, he says we need these vehicles very bad.
All right. There's no other comments. Mason, thank you for the update. Appreciate your help on this. All right, we got a couple more. Tim Love is gonna give us an update on the census and then also talk about the survey results on the broadband study.
Good afternoon, Chairman and Commissioners. Our first topic relates to the 2020 census. Just wanted to give you a quick update on the ask this year, some of the work that staff has undertaken at this initial point, which is a long way to go. In your packet, you do have a copy of the slide if you'd like to follow along. So in terms of the 2020 census, our agenda today, we'll provide a quick overview of what's coming in 2020. We'll talk about our activities to date, and then we'll talk about next steps. So 2020 census overview, just a reminder, the federal government administers the census. However, the federal government relies heavily on local organizations, in particular, local governments, to assist with the census. And so this year, the census is doing that again, and they're asking for our support. The thought process here is that we have the relationships in the communities, and if we want to increase participation rates, the way to do that is use folks that know folks. In terms of what's coming long-term, postal mailings will start going out mid-March of 2020 related to the census. And those mailings will be active through the end of July. This year, the census is piloting a few options to take the census, so you'll have three options when you receive that mailing. One option will be to take the census online. So this is a new process. You'll be able to scan a QR code on your postcard that's tied to your address, and you'll be able to take the census in that way. Additionally, you'll be able to complete the census over the phone if you choose. And finally, as usual and as we've been accustomed to, you'll be able to complete the census in person if someone comes to your house. Quick notes, as you're talking to folks in the community, a lot of attention on the census this year. Census will never email you, and the census will never call you. That's not going to be their mode of contact. However, if they do come to visit you, they will have appropriate identification. So as you're talking to folks, please make sure that they're aware of that, especially as we're piloting kind of a new method of taking the census. A final note, the census will be the short-form version, so rather than 600 questions, we're talking about 10 to 15. So that's what you can expect. Just quick talking points if folks ask you in the community. If no questions there, we'll proceed to the next slide. So this is all about participation rates. We've given you the, the last two censuses as well as, census, sense, as well as a goal for 2020. So the federal government has put an 80% goal on us, which for us, you can see in the green, is a 4% increase on the last census, which was also a 4% increase on the previous census. So kind of tracking with our steady increase, but as you know, at a certain point, it's hard to improve upon really good marks. One thing that's really important for us, though, is to communicate the significance of the census. I know you know the value of counting folks and what that means politically, but I wanted to quantify it for you in a way that turns into dollars. So when we talk about the census, each uncounted resident is a loss of approximately $1,600 in federal funding per year, per person. So $1,600 per person times 10 years, which is the next time we would do a census, would be approximately $1,600 over a 10-year period for one person that's not counted. Again, we're counting all folks, so this could be counting a newborn, a three-year-old, a 50-year-old, doesn't matter. If we're able to increase our participation rate by 1%, that would be approximately 2,500 residents in Buncombe County, which equates to $4 million in federal funding annually and $40 million over 10 years, just by a 1% increase. So as we look at the census and move forward, just wanted to give you some talking points and, again, quantify the significance. One item I would say, I'd be remiss if I didn't say this, you know, estimating the exact dollar amount we're gonna get from federal funding after it goes to block grants and allocations, I can't do that, but I can give you a rough talking point. And this is supported by some research that's been passed to us. Any questions on participation?
What will we be doing at the county level to try to increase this? Will you go into that?
I'm headed there right now.
I'll keep that right up for you then.
So in terms of activities to date, we participated in a Census 101 session that was hosted by the Land of Sky, included representatives from Federal Census Bureau as well as other local governments. Out of that, we established a working group, which includes local governments. The city of Asheville is working with us, Bill Warford, Black Mountain, Leaverville. We've extended an invitation to all the municipalities in our county, and some are taking a more active role just based on their time commitments. Additionally, we have the chambers of commerce that are participating, so Asheville area, as well as the Black Mountains-Wananaua Chamber. And then finally, heavy support from our county departments. So our community engagement team, Health and Human Services, Communications, GIS, and Planning. All of this comes together to identify, Commissioner Belcher's question, how is the community, how is the county participating? Our goal is to establish a Complete Count Committee. This is the census terminology, a CCC. And the purpose of that Complete Count Committee is to really hone the messaging, create the buy-in to sort of get folks understanding the value of the census and what they need to do. The county will not be knocking on doors as county employees. County employees may volunteer or, you know, take on temporary jobs, that's separate. But as a county organization, our job is really to organize and make sure the word gets out. Does that answer your question, Commissioner? A little bit more about the Complete Count Committee. The purpose, again, this is a census recommended process. We didn't come up with this. It's a cross-sector committee designing encouraged participation in the community. Primary goals are to develop an outreach plan, which is tailored to the unique characteristics of the community. Again, we know the folks in the community, so use us to get the word out. The Buncombe County-wide CCC will include representation from our schools, so I'll be in touch with BCS and ACS. The university is UNCA, AB Tech, nonprofit community, United Way is an example, faith community, business community, and the media. We think having the media involved is a key way for us to get the word out. So we will be sort of standing up our subcommittees, which will include folks in these areas, and then get the word out. Questions? Next step, so in terms of the near term, we're trying to get this Complete Count Committee together, so we're sending out invitations to folks like, hey, if you're interested in the census, give us a call, here's how you loop into what we're doing. If you've got your own initiative, that's great, let's just stay in contact, that way we're not duplicating. We'll convene that full group sometime in late August. We'll do census training in late September, and then we'll continue to develop our communication plan through late October so that we're ready in April of 2020. In terms of an ongoing basis, very important to recruit additional census employees. So again, this is, we're not paying anyone. This is federal funding for census employees. But partnership specialists and recruiting specialists are critical assets for census. Those are part-time federally funded positions, and the census is having trouble this year recruiting folks for those positions. To support that, our communications team has developed some social media posts that they pushed out through our county central website, as well as Facebook and other sources. We pass that along to our, the folks on our committee to pass that along as well. We'll continue to work with our partner organizations, and ultimately, we'll do a cross-community marketing campaign. Those are our next steps. You'll hear more from us as we move forward. We're currently meeting on a bi-weekly time schedule just to make sure we're getting our feet set, but we hope to relax that at a certain point and focus on the census. Any questions?
Sounds good. So, yeah.
All right, so we're gonna shift gears out of the census and into broadband. For this conversation, Sarah Nichols with Land of Sky is gonna join us. Sarah is a regional planner with Land of Sky, has been instrumental in broadband in our county as well as others. So our agenda today, actions to date just to get you up to speed. We'll talk about some of the observations from the survey that we issued earlier this year, and then, again, we'll talk about next steps. Before I do that, I want to give Sarah a quick opportunity to update you on, you know, her role from a regional standpoint, the West Engine project and things like that.
The, the West Engine project came out of our last economic development strategic plan, as broadband being identified as kind of the infrastructure of today's time. Water, sewer, roads, now it's broadband because of all of the facets that it addresses, education, healthcare, et cetera. And specifically with broadband, what's tricky is there's not a lot of local governments that have a grasp on how it intersects with the private sector. There's a lot of policy in the way, there's a lot of money in the way, and how we funnel that money in the right place. Is it their responsibility to do it or ours? So Land of Sky, several years ago, started to dig into this a little bit deeper and thought a way to do this would be to attract a new provider to the area. They'd identified six urban areas, two of which in Buncombe County, Bill Warford and the city of Asheville, and put out an RFI to get that process started. We're still working with that provider who want that, that contract and to remove barriers, but it's, it's no small feat to do that in today's, I'd say, political climate. Phase two of the process is what Buncombe County at large, as well as all of our member governments, are a part of, which was to do a regional demand aggregation study. The reason we do that is the FCC maps grossly overrepresent what happens specifically in rural areas as to what kind of coverage is served, and because they're provider-driven. If a provider lights up one person in a census block, they get to call that covered. The state, as a byproduct, said what we need to do is get our own data so that we can be eligible for more federal funding to say that we are indeed unserved. We have to kind of say FCC says this, but Buncombe County says this instead. And through that process, you do the demand aggregation. We put together these profiles that also have a lot of additional information coming along with it, ways we see that Buncombe County has opportunities, what kind of next steps, things we're doing in policy. And we use kind of the big package of all that data we collected back over the last few months to drive those answers for you guys.
And so at this point, we'll give you kind of a preview of some of the activities that have occurred. So actions to date, Sarah came and presented to you on April 16th at your regular meeting, updated you on some of the activities that were occurring. Since then, two major things have happened, an inventory of vertical assets, so these, fancy way of saying tall things, towers, tall stuff. But in addition, we began a community survey campaign. So county staff worked together to develop this poster that you may have seen in local post office, or we tried to get them in Ingles, but less successful there. But our county staff sort of went forward with that process using our communications folks, but also our community engagement folks. So they reached out directly to community centers and sort of got the word out. Our campaign was utilization posters, social media, and in some cases, in-person visitation. So we had some folks actually helping others complete surveys at community centers just to make sure we got the word out. In the end, the result was about 2,600 respondents, which was a decent, decent turnout for an online survey, especially when you're sort of asking folks to take an online survey if they may not have.
They don't have.
Right.
The irony is.
Well, in the, in the places where we suspected we're uncertain, we did more of that in person. We tried to find a local partner to do the paper surveys. Your health department did paper surveys as well, which had a good response. 2,600 respondents for a head-niche survey, I think is great representation. We got it across Buncombe County.
Great. So what did the survey say? Just want to give you a handful of talking points. There, there's others out there, but of our 2,600 respondents, 9% said that they did not have internet access. In addition, 61% said that they required the internet to do educational activities, so homework. Additionally, 35% said they require this for a home-based business. Another talking point was that 17% claim that service disruptions were greater than eight hours per disruption for their internet access.
Greater.
Correct. So what, what is this, you know, these are great talking points, what does that tell us? One, it tells us that demand to use internet for more than just fun stuff, you know, to use it for education, to use it for jobs, is there. However, our access is either limited because we don't have it, or if we do have it, the quality is questionable. So it's a pretty compelling story there. When we look at our survey results over the course of the county, you know, I know this is difficult to read, and I'll just talk high level. You know, when we look at the county as a whole here on the left, you know, lots of folks do have access. That's indicated by those green dots. However, the red dots are kind of buried in there. You're saying, Tim, more people have access than don't. And that's part of the point. Lots of people do have access if you're in the right community, if you're located off the right highway, whatever it is. But we still need to pay attention to those that don't have access.
So how, is there a difference between those that have LTE on their phone and those that have wireless? I mean, I mean, because some, some people may think they have access, but it's LTE.
There's an education gap on what people would perceive.
Absolutely.
Access, so I would say that probably a lot of people who think they have access are just getting it off of LTE on their phone.
Yeah, because some of those dots, I don't know if they're.
Can you walk us through on that map, the red dots, not too many, but there are some red dots that appear in seas of green?
That's right.
What's, what would you imagine is going on there?
There's a couple things.
The, we asked why. If you said you didn't have access, why is that? And the greatest percentage in Buncombe County came from cost, a cost barrier. Thanks.
So, you know, there's a question of, can I get access if I want it? And then, I can get access, but I can't afford it.
Additionally, in the most rural parts of Buncombe County, the only service available to them would be satellite, which is both expensive and not effective.
That's the win-win.
No.
Perfect story.
Pay the most for the worst.
Yeah. Thank you, that's helpful.
Where the conversation continues to get deeper is on the right, where we're talking about quality of access. In this case, blue is bad. I'm not gonna force you to try to read that, I'm just gonna shift to the next slide and show you kind of what we saw. So, again, blue dots are saying my quality of access is not adequate. And so we saw kind of three pockets, there's more than that, but we're just trying to simplify it. So this sandy mush area here on the left, we continue to see questions about the quality of the access here. Tons of blue dots. What I would say is that sandy mush community, as you know, is fairly well organized around this topic, and so they got the word out in a strong way. Where we also sort of see some gaps is just south of Barnersville, right over here, I guess the Reams Creek area probably we call it. So again, some pockets of inadequate service. And then over here in sort of the southeast, so the Broad River area, seeing again some gaps. Shouldn't be surprising to us, we, we kind of know where we don't have access, we've heard about it. But it was good to have that quantifiable data that we can then take to providers and say, here's the actual data, it's not anecdotal, this is objective, here's where we have gaps.
We talked to them in Broad River, there's a company that, that, they've got, they have access at the fire department now.
That's correct.
But there's a company that needs more towers to help with access in that area.
That's absolutely right. And so Commissioner, that, that company is Skyrunner.
Yeah.
And what we will do is, and I'll talk about this in just minutes, we're gonna host a provider meeting in the coming months, and they would be invited to that meeting to participate along with other providers as well. All right, so we kind of got ahead on costs, but here are a few additional question or observations about cost. So 47.4% of respondents has said, respondents said services are too expensive. And so too expensive, that's kind of relative, you know, we're all different. Well, 24% of those respondents said that the average cost of their services were greater than $75 a month.
Yeah, it's just probably.
And so I, I can tell you that's more than I pay, so that was kind of my barometer. Of that 12%, of that 24%, 12% paid it greater than $100 a month just to get broadband. In many cases, I'd extrapolate, but quality of service probably isn't even that good for that high, that high cost. When we asked respondents why they don't subscribe, period, why do you not have internet, period, the response combined was that it was either unavailable, can't get it, too slow, or it's too slow, don't want it. 75.9% of the time. We also asked the question, well, if you have bad service, is that because you're paying a minimal amount, do you need to upgrade? Over 60% claim that they didn't upgrade because there wasn't a better service available.
So, so I didn't take the survey, but I'm in some of those dots out there that, you know, on the left where the, where it's service is bad and slow, and, and the reason I said it, you know, a lot of people will just go. I said it, you know, a lot of people will just go to the phone and use LTE. I mean, mine is terribly slow, I mean, I won't, I won't mention the carrier, but the initials are AT&amp;T.
They're very expensive.
I mean, you're just really trying to decide between, okay, well, I'll go to the satellite or I'll go to this, and then talk to ten people and they say, oh, no, you don't want to do that. I mean, you don't want to go from where you're at to this. There's no really good answer on who's the, who's the great provider. Frustrating part is too, you pay X number of dollars, whether it's fifty, sixty, seventy dollars, and then a year later, it, it slows down, you know, and then there's, and then they have to make a decision on reopening, calling, threading the, the switch and, you know, get your price cut and all that stuff, which is foolish. So, uh, if they were doing this, uh, you know, there was a part of me that was saying, well, you know, why are we doing all of this? Because I know what they're going to tell you, you know, in Kenmore or Last River or wherever it is. And, uh, but having the information to be able to seek out the barriers is what I think's going to be good.
That's exactly it. Uh, the quote that I'll steal from Keith Conover, who works for NC Department of Information Technology, NC DIT, he says that broadband is market-driven, not regulated. And that's exactly what it is. It's a utility where supply and demand is king, um, but there's no regulation to require service in a way that we would postal mail or something of that nature. So it's a, it's a tricky area, um, which is why, as we transition to next steps, what's coming next? So we'll, we'll be back, Sarah and I, with Keith Conover from NC DIT, to brief you in September on what we're doing next. And that big next moment is a provider meeting. We feel it's really important to get in front of y'all because, uh, NC DIT is going to manage this meeting for us. That way they can provide kind of a firewall between us and providers as a government and a private entity. And the purpose will be to sort of show the providers, one, invite them all, you know, so you're already here, Skyrunner, you're already here, AT&amp;T, but maybe you're on the west coast and you wanted to get into an east coast market. Why do we do that? We're just trying to increase competition. Uh, it's basic supply and demand. Uh, goal, given the data, what can you, what can you do for us? Here's where our towers are, here's where our gaps are, what services can you provide that will assist us, uh, in addressing some of these gaps? Again, not a new process, not something we came up with, Keith has done this twelve times.
It's part of the state's broadband plan to implement it in this process. Additionally, it tells your existing encumbered providers where, where people are angry. And what, what we've seen in other counties is that they automatically, actually during the survey process even, will start to get ahead of the problem before they start losing customers. So there's a lot of outputs that we won't see results from directly, they don't, they don't have to come before the commissioners, but your people just get better service and you didn't have to do all that much to make it happen.
So we'll provide additional details in September about that. Purpose of that meeting, y'all are welcome to join, but it's not meant to be a, a board meeting per se, or really a meeting where we just yell at our providers, it's not really the goal. Uh, goal is to get them the information so that they can provide quality service or improve it, so.
Are there, um, are there policies that we could consider that would be helpful in terms of, you know, fostering this? Uh, and second, in terms of the inventory of vertical assets, do we have some that are underutilized and could be good, you know, hosting locations, I guess, for infrastructure? Does that look promising, or did, you know?
It does look promising. So we'll, we'll be working with staff here to amend some of the policies that do exist, especially for getting on towers. I understand there's some logistics with who owns property, some of that that we'll need to work through and see if we can work with the landowners directly, but I, it's very promising.
Okay, so these are, these are mostly not, um, tall things that are on publicly on property, but you're just kind of looking out there in the community, like where are things that could be infrastructure, but they're mostly private property, private, and so there's not necessarily like any kind of existing site control to, for this particular purpose, that would have to be, you know, someone would have to work on that, either one of the providers or someone.
Some of the towers that you own are pretty strategically placed in unserved areas, but the land that the towers are on could be questionable at how the lease existed. But we need to work, there, there are examples in other counties where, um, if you own a tower, you get a lease fee off of that, so, for that space. But a way that the county might amend that is that if you're doing it in a rural area, maybe it's less of a lease fee, or not a lease fee for a certain number of months until they get a customer base established. So those are the kind of things we want to work to get in place, especially coming up on this provider meeting, to have some ideas.
And have you looked at where there are not tall things, but it would be good to have tall things, and if we own property in those places, then, you know, maybe we can build some infrastructure, right, or, or help facilitate that in places we already have some land, maybe some public, public land?
You know, one of the projects that you funded in FY20 budget, capital plan is the Garen Creek Tower, uh, so that's a, a key example. We've got initial conversations on using state assets as well as can be kind of, this is another government entity, the purpose can be a challenge, but we're working on that. We will be doing a tower tour, um, in about two weeks, and the purpose is literally, because you know, towers, it's about space on the tower, right? So looking at towers that have potential and hope to bring back to y'all some options, you know, if you did X, Y, and Z, or if you changed this policy, you'd be able to open up this coverage area, something like that.
I mean, I know it's, uh, probably not doable and may not even make sense, but my mind went to, what if there was a tower at every fire department, you know? Boom, you're covered, you know? I mean, because they're, and you wouldn't want one at every fire department, but I mean, there's some, and I think there actually is one behind Upper Hominy.
That's correct, there is.
And I don't know if that's on our property.
It's on their property. We use part of it at least. Yeah, I think so.
That's the purpose behind the tower tour, that we can identify all those assets, what we own and what we don't, and who we can partner with, so.
Oh, I, I toured it because I had a, had a constituent call and go, why did y'all put that tower in front of my house?
And are parallel conversations happening in neighboring counties?
The timing of this, we did, Madison County was already done when we started this, but the other three in Landis Sky, Henderson, Transylvania, Monmouth, all happened at the same time, so we're having similar conversations with those three counties right now.
Great, would be exciting to hear any ideas that are generated to the first part of your question, which is there anything at the level of board action or policy or that we might be able to do either as a county or as a consortium of counties addressing the same issue?
All right. Hey Sarah, thanks for coming back, Tim, thank you again as well. All right, um, so that gets us through.
Before you go to the media logistics, I just want to remind you that we have DaKisha with us today, I forgot to introduce her at the beginning of the meeting. This is the first board meeting.
Welcome to Monmouth County, we're so glad to have you on the management team.
Thank you.
Glad to be here.
All right, um, so, let's talk about, let's just, we, instead of the beginning, we talked just a little bit about how this meeting is working for everybody. You know, I've heard some different comments from folks about, um, yeah, so not wanting to speak for anybody, feel free to, everyone to chime in, but what I hear is people saying they like having this meeting, they like having the ability to kind of preview some stuff before we are actually voting on it. I've heard, but I've heard some questions about, is this the best time of day for it? I've heard, I feel like I've heard a few members talk about, what if we moved it more into the afternoon, so we'd kind of come over, you know, talk a little bit before the meeting, but not have kind of this midday meeting, and then, you know, some, for some folks, it's kind of coming in and out, so some sentiment maybe to do something closer to the five o'clock And I've also heard some, some support for, for moving this meeting to the regular commission chamber. So those are a few of the ideas I've, I've, um, heard. Um, what are, what do anybody want to kind of jump in and share thoughts about any of those items or feedback?
Honestly, what we did was to three o'clock do, it worked out pretty good upstairs. And, you know, setting all this up takes people's time, that's fine, but it's just like the sheriff, we had to have a discussion, but the sheriff's sitting behind me, you know? If I'm sitting upstairs, he's looking at me and I'm looking at him. And that's the way I want it, I want the people sitting out there, they can look at me, and, and that, that's the way it should be working, not, uh, circle a table with people behind you, oh, there's staff back here, you know? Sometimes you don't even see the staff, because of these poles and stuff in the way. So that's why I'd like to see it moved to neutral time. If it's three o'clock, it is, you know, or, or in thirty minutes, or two-thirty, it don't matter, but move it upstairs in our chamber, where we don't have to sit up every time we do this. Walk in there and sit down, it's done.
So all time mineral click on the location, and the reason why it wasn't upstairs in chambers, when people look at this, it is to separate the fact that we're not voting at all. So the separation of location was important to let people recognize, because this is shown on the internet.
We can do the same thing upstairs though. We don't have to vote upstairs either. We go into meetings up there and just have a closed session, we close and we walk back in room, then we open it back up when we come out. So it's not, it's not that big a deal.
I think, I think, I think that anytime you're starting a, a series of meetings and you have a few, uh, there's certainly nothing wrong with, with trying up there at three o'clock and see how that works. I do like the fact that it's closer to the, to the meeting, because I'm going to go and try to, other than go in and get me a sandwich, I'm going, I'm going to figure out what to do the next couple hours. I usually push a default button, go and work in the office, so I'm going to be here. But if it's more convenient for everybody to try it there and, uh, try it upstairs, I mean, I, I don't see a reason not to try that. See how it works.
I like moving it closer to the five o'clock meeting as well. In terms of where we have it, I actually like having it here because it does give us that separation of what we're doing here versus in the chambers, but definitely support moving it a little later in the day.
I really appreciate the structure here and also think tweaking it makes a lot of sense. I, um, timing, I'm sort of agnostic about whatever folks prefer. I think the affordable housing and early childhood committees might have to adjust our standing times, but I'm sure that could be done. I like doing it here because it does feel like a different kind of setting, and I think the chamber is just such a, um, it just is such a formal setting, which is good in some ways, but I think for these kind of discussions, I like the opportunity to interact with staff, I like the opportunity to interact with so many different staff, I feel like I'm getting to know more staff. There, once in a while, there's an item on these agendas, I can't think of one necessarily today, but, um, where it feels like it might fit on the five o'clock agenda equally as a county manager update or a just staff level presentation, something that, um, you know, I think it, it's nice to imagine that we have people tuning into this and that, I think if folks are going to follow a county commission meeting, it's much more likely to be a five o'clock one, um, than if there's something that we know, there's a lot of interest around or that, just, so, so that's one adjustment I might sort of ask us to think about is, um, uh, and, um, I think it would be good to set up some protocol wherein if people are top, like, we have that where you speak to people from here versus kind of back and forth in the, in the space, um, so there's going to be that back and forth, that there's a little more structure around it and that it sort of follows the decorum and protocol we use anytime we're talking with other folks.
Robert, what do you think?
Two o'clock, twelve o'clock, nine o'clock doesn't matter to me. I usually try and make Tuesday my long day to schedule everything, but I, I just don't like having where you have to turn around to talk. I mean, if you could do a setting where we could see everybody, I mean, main thing is, is watching icons act is what I'm really big on, is seeing how other people reacting to what's being said, is why I would love to do it upstairs.
Al, what do you think?
Fine, whatever you do, you know, I guess I have more time to know. And on Tuesday, I'm like Robert, though I usually try to leave the whole day open, you know, and all. But, uh, my concern is that we keep these work sessions like they are because we get a lot done, and I think we can, you know, discuss a lot more, but where we have it, it's fine, it doesn't matter.
All right, um, I'll roll other, we'll, we'll have a list.
I, I agree with Al that it's important that we have these sessions that we can talk. I do like the structure where it's more informal and not a formal setting, I want staff to be engaged and you know them and they know you and present to you. So I like the informality of it, so, but I serve at your pleasure, so.
Well, I appreciate you, I think appreciate your suggestion to do these, I think, I agree it's been a good addition to how we kind of start looking at issues, um, especially when they're not ready to vote on right now, but are, you know, the things are starting and we can have some, learn some stuff, give some informal feedback along the way. I would, um, you know, I think I would lean towards the afternoon, um, at three, maybe even three-thirty, um, and, and I think I would, you know, I, I definitely have mixed feelings about the location, I like the, um, I kind of like this as the, it is a little more informal and I kind of like that, but I, I also do think it is a little awkward with people sitting by, and I don't know how you would change it to fix that, I've thought about this room and I don't know, I mean, if you have this, I mean, we can't really just go one direction, so I don't know if there's a way to solve that, so I would, I would, um, I guess I would lean towards, towards moving it upstairs, um, even though I like some aspects of being down here, I would lean towards doing it upstairs. So, um, I know we're, we're not all on the same page on each of these, so, um, but I think we just, you know, just, um, but we do need to make a decision. So why don't we just do, like, and I know we don't usually vote on this here, but all we're talking is voting on where we meet, so we can, we can vote on this here, we can't, because it's not a policy decision, we're just deciding where to have this meeting, you know?
And I don't really think you need to vote if consensus is that we move it.
We get a resolution though.
Yeah, try it up there.
To set it here and at this time, so you would have to do another resolution.
We passed a resolution saying it will be here. All right. So we'll need to admit, modify the resolution to shift the time, okay. Well, that sounds good. Why don't we do that and we can always, you know?
What, we do it at three o'clock, I'd say, yes.
Start, yes, and we'll bring that resolution on the twentieth, so effective the first meeting in September, we can advertise.
Three o'clock.
I think three's probably good. Sounds, sounds good, and this could be an ongoing, you know, we keep thinking about it, there, there are definitely pros and cons, I think, you know, to each, each of these questions. Uh, one other thing I would just say too, just in terms of conversation, these meetings are good, I, but I don't think we should necessarily, um, I think this question about, do you put an item on the agenda for this meeting versus the five o'clock meeting, that is an important question, right? Because I think in some ways, the five o'clock meeting will always get more public attention than this, so, so in some ways on issues that we think are, especially if they're issues that are of real public interest, in some ways I would, I would suggest, let's put it on the five o'clock meeting with the understanding it's for informational purposes only, this is just the first discussion, not the voting discussion, but things that are really important to us, I think, in some ways, um, if we put too much of that on these meetings, I think it diminishes the five o'clock meeting. Like, we've had some of these meetings where this is a longer meeting than five, the five o'clock meeting, and that doesn't seem, that doesn't seem right to me.
And everything here will come to you at five o'clock on an.
Eventually, yeah, eventually, that's true.
So this is actually giving you a heads up to know that we're still working on items and you will see these again, but at five o'clock, a lot of times it's not ready for us to talk about it beyond just, here's a heads up.
So I think, I think, you know, to, to your, your point, let me see if we're on the, on the same page. What you don't want to happen is something in, in the pre-meeting or this type of environment where that it comes to us and then because it looks like there might not be enough, you know, it wasn't that warm and fuzzy, you know, as far as our conversations, and it never shows up on the agenda. You know, we, because then you're making those decisions in that, in that meeting and we're not, we're not getting the full public impact.
Does that make sense?
Kind of.
Yeah, but anything, yes, I heard what you were saying as far as if it's here and we don't like what we're talking, we won't bring it forward again. If we don't like it, we might need to do more work on it and get it where it needs to be, but it will come to you eventually, there's nothing that we would hold back from bringing to you, whether or not it's a good or bad outcome.
But I guess part of this, like, and again, I don't think we've done this, but like, we wouldn't want the five o'clock meetings to be like the only time you hear about that, that issue, you know? In some cases, I think we want to spend some time there too, just because again, the, look at the, the room here, we've got a couple of very dedicated citizens who attend and some media, but this frankly just is a much lower profile meeting, and so I think that it's, it's just important for the public to, to kind of be aware of what we're working on.
What I mean, some conversations come out like, you know, what you said, and Chairman, that is if, if, if three of you, I mean, we're talking about this, if, if three people want to put this on the agenda, you know, you know, and then hey, that's, that's what this conversation is about, if, if somebody wants to put it on the agenda, then, you know, let's move it and, and do it at that time. So I see a lot of that type of thing coming out of us, because we have an opportunity to talk. I do hope we talk as much up there as we do here. I do not like the way this is laid out, okay? But, uh, I do hope we talk as much. as much up there, or more. Well, you know, I, you know, I'm, 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 but I'm just saying that, that the conversation needs to be, I mean, we've got to have our decorum, but we don't, we don't want to hold anything back. Because, I mean, you know, Brownie's done a good job in, in reeling that type of thing in. You know, so we don't need, I mean, we need to be able to say, you know, respectfully what's on our mind and get it out. And we need to have those discussions.
All right. Good, good, good conversation. Hey, before we adjourn, one item that's on the agenda tonight, and there's information in your packets, is the internal audit director recommendation. And this is coming from the audit committee. That's correct. And the commission does not need to vote on this. Do we, or do we? Or is this just simply that we're going to, you know, this is an important position. This is a position Terry Wells, I mean, sorry, Terry Orange has had. And so this is
I need to check the bylaws. I think they do.
I think on the agenda, it's listed as a presentation item, not as a voting item?
Okay.
So
So maybe that's why it's, all right. Let me, let's verify that.
Okay. If we need to move it to a voting, I mean, if we need to vote on it, we'll vote on it. But I just wanted to bring everyone's attention to, like, you have information on, on, I think on the, on the website, it just says this item, but here's the information of who it is. So we wanted people to have a chance to understand who the candidate is before you have to either hear about it or actually vote on it tonight.
The internal audit that reports directly to us, right.
I think the bylaws you set up, they report directly to that audit committee.
The audit committee?
Reporting line in the
Okay.
From the audit committee, right? There's some reporting line.
There's a structure.
The auditor does, can go around the manager if need be, and go direct to the board of commissioners, yes.
Yes.
Yes, the structure of hiring and firing is on the recommendation of the audit committee.
Audit committee, right. And then who makes the hiring decision, though? The manager or the commission?
I'm trying to verify that now.
Okay, all right. We'll go clarify that. All right.
I think it's you guys, too.
You, too.
Seems like it's, I have a good idea.
Right.
Yeah.
All right, great. Anybody, any other comments before we?
I have one thing that I just want to say, and I'll be very brief. I've attended the two listening sessions that Sheriff Miller has had in District Two. They've both been fairly well attended. And the one in Black Mountain had a whole host of different questions than the one last week in Weaverville. But what I want to share with y'all, the one from Weaverville last week, the question that we ended on was, as residents of Buncombe County, how can we support law enforcement to the point of it being a desirable career for folks graduating college and, and high school, and wanting to be a part of law enforcement? So I just wanted to share that. I thought that was a really interesting conversation that's starting to bubble up at a time where law enforcement is really struggling to recruit people to want to serve in those jobs. So Sheriff Miller, Chief Deputy Everhart really took those comments to heart, and I'm looking forward to seeing how we can also support them in those efforts to hire and to recruit.
Good, good. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Sanders. Great question.
One thing I got is, us doing these meetings, I like it. And like, time does not matter to me. Three o'clock could be good. But I don't think any of us want to go back to the three-on-three meetings.
No.
Because it was just scattered out for you and a lot of others for five hours instead of us packing it in here, so.
I was having a patient with
Everybody's questions.
Exactly right.
Yeah, but they'd really rip apart three meetings, because
No.
Three, three, and then I need to know what's going on, too. So it's actually three different presentations, and that's just not a good way to do, to do it, right? This is much better.
Yeah, I, you know, the It'd be one-on-one.
For
For you, sir. It was one-on-one until I would go to seven o'clock if I was there anymore. Well, we don't want to go there. We ain't got time. But I'd ask more in the room. So Kind of three-on-three. You know, my only comment aside is I want, I want the, I want this communication open. I want it out there. I want us talking about it. I don't want people thinking that, you know, that two commissioners or, or however number of commissioners are talking, or trying to manipulate things, that staff is doing X, Y, and Z, all that stuff. You know, we put all this out, so people can see that and see how we discuss, and, and get everything out. Because I don't want to be surprised. Public doesn't want to be surprised. I don't want to be surprised, you know, by anything that is going on the, you know, the agenda or anything. And I think, for me, this, this is, this helps me with that. It helps the public, I think.
This is better than when it starts.
At your space, your books?
Yeah.
That was from Rebecca's?
That was from Rebecca, right.
And I'm starting. All right. Food, food. All right. We're adjourned. Thanks, everybody.
Excuse me.